I now call to order this April 7th, 2025 Friendswood City Council Meeting and announce that we have a quorum. Tonight's invocation is going to be done by my pastor, Dr. Pastor Justin Briggel of Good Shepherd Episcopal Church. So if y'all wouldn't mind standing for the invocation and then we'll remain standing for the pledges.
Two quick prayers. I wanted to start with a prayer for our country. This prayer is a historic prayer written in 1882 and then pray for our local government. Let us pray. Almighty God, who has given us this good land for our heritage, we humbly beseech thee that we may always prove ourselves a people mindful of thy favor and glad to do thy will. Bless our land with honorable industry, sound learning, and pure manners. Save us from violence, discord, and confusion, from pride and arrogance, and from every evil way. Defend our liberties and fashion into one united people, the multitudes brought hither out of many kindreds and tongues, and do with the spirit of wisdom those to whom in thy name we entrust the authority of government, that there may be justice and peace at home, and that through obedience to thy law we may show forth thy praise among the nations of the earth. In the time of prosperity fill our hearts with thankfulness, and in the day of trouble suffer not our trust in thee to fail, all which we ask through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. And then a prayer for our local government. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in this city Friendswood, especially for our mayor, my council members, John, Sally, Trish, Robert, Joe, and Brent, and our young council members present, the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. Thank you all.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you, Father Justin. Appreciate it. That Episcopal Prayer Book has something for every occasion. Great. Okay. All right. This is the next item is council for a day. This is what we all wait for all year long is to have these second graders come in. These are some of our best council meetings, and now we get to have four every year because there's four schools that have second grade classes. So, so happy to have them. They're going to consider a proclamation declaring April 7th, 2025 as Windsong Elementary School Day in the city of Friendswood, Texas. That's today. You know, in proclamations, it's usually good to start, have the proclamation at the beginning of the day so you have the whole day as proclaimed, but you know, they're, they're getting proclaimed. They got about five and a half hours left of the day, so you know, pretty good. We've been doing this for six years now, and just last year is when we added Windsong Elementary as the fourth second grade class that we have in here. And so this is the second time they're participating. And four reasons that we came up with way back in 2018 when we started doing this. We wanted to have these students get a feel for, for what it is to serve, because we all serve up here. We're all volunteers. Nobody up here gets paid. At least the seven of us, the other people standing, we pay them a little bit, but they deserve it. So we want them to learn how the government works a little bit, value of community service, like I mentioned, foster leadership development. Just think about it, people, these are future leaders in Friendswood. I don't know if I'll still be alive, but sometime in the future, somebody that has been a second grade council for a day person is going to run for city council in Friendswood. I mean, they gotta turn 18 before they can even think about it, but somebody, we had second graders in 2018, so they're in eighth grade this year, so they're getting up there. And one of these days, a future leader, probably more than one, will, will come from this group, and I'll be proud to hear about that. Probably when they're out there campaigning, they'll say, "And I was a second grade council member. I made positive changes." Yes, good. All right. And we also want to support FISD's character education programs, which is always good. So now what I'm going to do is introduce them one by one, have them come up and take their seat here, the dais. Dais, that's our word for this big desk that we have that we all sit at up here. So I'm going to call each student up one by one. I'll call you by name, and I want to introduce your teacher at the same time. And by the way, Principal McCaslin is back there too. So thank you, Wendy, for always being here. It's great. Two years in a row. All right. First off, we're going to start with City Secretary number one, Micaela Valverde, over here. Micaela. Did I say it right? All right. While pictures are being made, Reese Hoffman is City Secretary number two. It's tough to do Letty's job. This is the city secretary right now, and it takes two of y'all to do what she does. Councilmember position number six is Eli Spitzenberger. From Mrs. Biffle's class. Mrs. Biffle. Mrs. Biffle was here at about 4:30, so. And then we have Councilmember position number five, Alexa Carnes, from Mrs. Williams' class. Mrs. Williams, thank you. Councilmember position number four, Cohen Lucas. What? Cal. Yeah, Councilmember Graffon has stuffed animals up here too, but he hides them under the desk. Our mayor is Autumn Castille, from Mrs. Smith's class. Autumn, you look too smart to be the mayor. Mayor, these mayors are always better looking than me and smarter than I. Councilmember position three, Joaquin Valdez, also from Mrs. Smith's class. Mrs. Smith, did you raise your hand both those times? Okay. Thank you for being here. Councilmember position number two, Logan Peacock, from Mrs. Goodrich's class. Councilmember position number one is Jackie Nestra, from, also from Mrs. Goodrich's. Pearls and everything, John. I mean, she makes that position one look good. And finally, our city manager for tonight is Irene Mergola, from Mrs. Biffle's class. Skipped right over city attorney. I don't know why. Where is our city attorney? Oh, she's standing right there. You know, my thumb just went right past. Okay, well, thank you. And city attorney, replacing Karen Horner for a few minutes, who's going to give me a hard time later, Zoe Lynn. From Mrs. Biffle's class also. Okay, mayor, I'm going to turn it over to you. So you have the first line or? Good. Take over.
Consider proclamation declaring April 7th, 2025 as Windsong Elementary Day in the city of Friendswood, Texas. Would the city manager please give the council an overview of the item?
Mayor and council, tonight you have before you a proposed proclamation declaring April 7th, 2025 Windsong Elementary Day in Friendswood, Texas. As you know, Windsong Elementary is part of the Friendswood Independent School District and is an exemplary, exemplary campus and source of pride for our community.
Has our city attorney approved the wording of the proposed proclamation?
Yes, mayor, I have drafted the wording of the proposed proclamation, and it is in line with the vision statement of the city Friendswood.
Would the city secretary please read the city visions, vision statement for the record?
The city of Friendswood has the following statement as its vision. Together we build our future, a friendly place to live, work, fight, and worship.
Thank you. I will now read the proposed proclamation. This proposed proclamation of the city of Friendswood, Texas, declares April 7th, 2025 as Windsong Elementary Day in the city of Friendswood, Texas. It is now time to take a vote. Do I have a motion accepting the proposed proclamation?
I move to that we accept the proposed proclamation as presented.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second accepting the proposed proclamation. Is there any discussion?
At Windsong Elementary, we pledge to be kids with character, and we pledge to be bucket fillers.
At Windsong Elementary, we will be honest, reliable, and roughly of trust.
We will be responsible and fair during what we must.
At Windsong Elementary, with our words and actions, we show that we care.
We will be good citizens and do our share.
At Windsong Elementary, we will respect ourselves and others too.
We will expect the best in all we do.
Would the city secretary please read the motion on the table?
We have a motion by councilmember position one and a second for councilmember position two to accept the proposed proclamation of the city of Friendswood, Texas, declaring April 7th, 2025 as Windsong Elementary Day in the city of Friendswood, Texas.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hands. Any opposed? Please raise your hands. Motion passes, 7-0. Congratulations, Windsong Elementary School. With there being no other business, I adjourn this council for a day meeting.
Awesome. Great job, mayor. Okay, we probably have to take some more pictures. That's always the order of the day. Katie, what do you want us to do?
So I guess bring teachers and administration up, and then we'll take a picture.
How about, you want the kids in front?
Yeah, kids and teachers here, and then council behind.
Okay, good. So you guys go out in front now and stand out in front. Oh, I love it. Steven. Good job.
No, I'm going to have them hold the.
Yeah, we're just standing back here. Great. Where's Sally go? Rod, Karen, up here. Letty, Raquel. Raquel, you want to be in this too? City Secretary number two.
Hey, my guys, you're going to have to squish that way.
Okay, real quick. Squish.
Yeah, okay. I want spaces accordingly.
Oh, she does. Oh, I love it. Three, two, one.
All right, all right, all right.
Thanks for that.
Hear ye, hear ye. Those having business with the court. Step forward and be heard. No, I'm trying to get everybody seated here.
We have one hour to log this out.
We have one hour.
One hour. There's a game. There's a very important game tonight.
Tip off at 7:50.
15? I thought it was 15. I think it's almost eight. Oh, okay. Still going to be, still be nice to make this short.
All right.
Wishful thinking.
Item number five, council comments and reports. I'll, I'll go first because I have something on my mind. Spring Sparkle in the city of Friendswood is this Saturday over at Centennial Park. So if you have lawn debris, if you have electronics, if you have all kinds of stuff now.
Shredding.
Shredding. Thanks, Patty. And, and keep Friendswood beautiful. People are going to have garage sale or they're going to have.
Also collecting bikes.
Bikes?
Bikes.
Okay.
Recycling bikes.
Recycling bikes, okay. Recycle bicycles. Okay. Got it. Okay, well, that's this Saturday morning, 8 to about 2. Thanks, Katie.
I'll have something.
Councilmember Hank.
Since our last council meeting, the library had a fundraiser called Camelot Beckins and raised $79,000 for the library. So congratulations to all those volunteers and thank you to all those volunteers and participants.
Yeah, thank you. There's a lot of people in this room that, that donated to that cause, and it's very important. You know, we obviously, it's a city function. We fund the library at a certain level, but the money that they bring in from these kinds of functions allow them to go above and beyond, and they'll have a mobile library, I think, come out of this and some great things. So thank you. Councilmember Branson.
Yes. Oh, thank you. You're awesome, Steven. So we're very excited. This will be our second Small Business Week. It will start May 4th. We are doing a proclamation first thing in the morning, mayor, on Tuesday, so set your alarm. Am I not on? Oh, I'm sorry. Small Business Week, May 4th through May 10th. We're very excited. This is our second event. We will have a proclamation on Tuesday morning. The mayor will kick us off, full week activities, but I just want to let y'all know that we do have on Monday evening, our keynote speaker is going to be the vice president of HEB. We're very, very excited. He doesn't usually come south of I-10, I understand, so we're very excited that he's going to be here. So Hope Village has graciously allowed us to have the event there, and we'd love for you all to come, spend some time with us, light refreshments, and hear what he has to say. I mean, HEB, wow, who doesn't enjoy HEB, right? So anyway, thank y'all. Appreciate it, and I hope y'all come out.
Councilmember.
I just want to congratulate the Houston Cougars. They'll be playing for the national championship tonight, so go Cougs.
Yeah, go Cougs. So I know somebody on the dais has a particular interest in Aubrey, is that you too? You're a Coug? Okay. But our city manager is definitely a Cougs fan. He's a graduate, so.
Seven thirty latest would be fine.
Seven thirty? Okay. Keep me on track. Mayor Pro Tem, Joe Matranga.
Thank you, sir. Keeping up with the recycle theme, I was able to tour the local recycling facility where all of our recycled goods that are picked up on the curbside are taken to and processed, sorted, and sent out for further use. I want, I learned a lot in that tour. It was, it was actually amazing to see all that, what they do and how they do it. And I learned, but I, while I was there, I learned a lot about what they can accept and what they can't accept. And I thought I'd just briefly, briefly go through that because I, there were some things I just hadn't thought about. Starting with the things that they can accept, but, but do show up from time to time at their facility. So they made a point of telling me, no auto parts, you know, no starters, no batteries, no, nothing like that. No furniture, no stuffed animals. They can't recycle those kind of things. A little surprised me, no, no textiles, no clothes, no tarps, things like that. It's, it's tough on their equipment. It gets, it clogs things up, and they have no, no market for that. No styrofoam recycling, no plastic bags. It's also something that interferes with the equipment in their sorting process. And no food residue on products. Not that it has to be, you know, absolutely pristine when it goes to them, but what they're concerned about is attracting flies, rodents, that sort of thing. The things that they can accept and do accept and process. Obviously, all aluminum cans, you know, all steel and tin cans, cardboard with or without tape, if it's got tape on it, Amazon tape, whatever, they said, yep, go ahead and bring it. And they process it and send it out. Newspapers, magazines, catalogs, and any kind of other clean paper products, glass bottles, any colored glass, they can accept. And with or without the lids on, lids on, it goes through a crusher and it, the lid comes off, not an issue. What they really like to see are the, the gallon milk jugs and tea jugs. They call that natural, a natural plastic, and they have a real market for those kind of things. All plastic bottles, like detergent, any other clear or colored plastics, absolutely recyclable at this facility. You know, let's see, what else? And what they do is they sort all this, they package it up in like kind, we saw, you know, compressed cubes of metal, we saw compressed cubes of plastic, clear plastic. So they take these and they send them on to other, mostly in the United States, they send these items off to be recycled, reused, create new products from. So keep recycling out there. It was, it was very interesting and wanted to pass that along, especially with all the other recycling topics. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Graffon or? All right. We'll move on to item six, public comment. To comply with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act, city council may not deliberate any item not listed on the agenda. As such, city council will listen to public comment and may, one, refer the item to city management for further action, or two, direct staff to place an item on a future agenda. During public comment, the public shall comply with council's rules of decorum. Everyone desiring to present comments should have completed the public hearing comment card in, in the foyer and submitted it to city secretary. At the podium, each participant shall give his or her name and address in order to provide a proper record, and the rules allow three minutes to present information. I encourage everyone to be as brief and to the point as possible. Number one is Cassie McGarvey.
Thank you very much, council. If I may, I have to hand out for you. It's all about empowering children and getting kids to do great things, getting kids to be physically fit and active, taking the bikes that we're going to donate at the Spring Sparkle and putting those to use. And how might these kids, our Friendswood kids, put them to use? My proposal to city council and the request for this to be put on the May agenda is a Rotary Youth Triathlon. Right now, the name that we are sort of mulling about is the Figgy Triathlon, and hopefully we can get Friendswood Beautiful's Figgy to come out and join us that day. So what the event is going to be is an event for youth ages five to 15 to participate in a triathlon. For the five to 10-year-olds, it is going to be a 100-yard swim at Stevenson Park, and then approximately a 2.5-mile bike ride down Castlewood, and then ending with a .5-mile run right around Friendswood Stevenson Park Track. For the older kids, our 11 to 15-year-olds, we are looking at a 200-yard swim, followed by an approximately 4.5-mile bike, and then a run that goes through Stevenson Park Trail, heading through Old City Park, completing with a loop around the Dog Park, and then back to the finish line. Seeing a child complete his or her first triathlon is incredibly exciting. It's an event that it's, no matter the distance that you're doing, it is a major accomplishment. Personally, I've always said that the happiest place on earth is an Ironman finish line, and this is true even at the smaller sprint triathlon levels for our youth. On page two of the handout, which I think is the biggest issue that we have and what I want, where we want to have council involvement, is the bike course. First of all, our primary goal in doing this is safety. Friendswood Rotary is partnering with an organization that has a USA Triathlon race director, which means twofold. Number one, every child who participates will have insurance through USA Triathlon, and then also Rotary has our own insurance policy as well. The issue comes in to the impact on the neighborhood. We would be, we will work with Wilderness Trails subdivision on this particular item, and the impact in terms of road closures would be less than an hour on a Sunday morning. So thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Cassie.
Good evening, councilmen, councilwomen. My name is Janice Schreger. I live in Wilderness Trails. I'm, I'm here to talk about three separate issues that all have to do with the same ball of wax, as far as I'm concerned. In 2018, the citizens of Friendswood voted down the throughway, the Friendswood throughway. We won by 295 votes, but we did, we voted it down. Then here, this past year, the tiers two was put in to process, and we're using taxpayer money again to develop land with a developer that has 14 violations against him, $3.4 million worth of violations because he didn't have a drainage plan. Now we're going to have another development, 117 acres, on land that is incredibly, incredibly dirty. PCLs way above tier one. There is cadmium, there's benzene, chloride, arsenic, barium, chromium, lead, mercury, selenium, silver, cadmium. Some of these are forever chemicals. They can never, ever be removed. I'm concerned that this city is not watching these developments. You're not, it's, you're taking a throughway behind a neighborhood that you're going to ruin those homes. You're doing it with developers that seem like they're not following rules, the, the rules that we have to all follow if you want to develop in this city. And I just don't understand how we got here, how we got from voting down a throughway with bond money, and then the city comes back and tries to do it again another way. It is, it is very concerning that the ExxonMobil property is going to be built on. Do you know that it, it has a placement on the deed restrictions that a wrap has to be put under a house that's developed there? Would you want a house like that? You can't use the groundwater, it has a wrap underneath it? I just want you guys to consider what you're doing to the city and look at these people and the throughway and what it's going to do to our city when we voted it down. That's, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, staff, Rod, good to see y'all again. I'm coming on behalf of the Eagle Lakes Homeowners Association because for three weeks in a row, we haven't had garbage, garbage service on Wednesday. I'm trying to figure out what is going on with our garbage service, and this is the fifth time in two and a half months that it's happened. So we have a Wednesday, Saturday service. We are usually a late afternoon pickup on Wednesday. Now we're getting no service on Wednesdays, and now we're, you know, relegated to Thursday morning, and then likewise, we get picked up Saturday morning. So we basically have 120 hours without service, and then we get about a 48 hours of service. And I don't know about your house, but at my house, I generate most of my trash, trash on the weekends when I'm doing activities around the house, yard work and things like that, and also I have guests over. So I, I'm just asking if y'all have heard anything, because I've, every week, called up to the city staff and said, okay, we're not getting trash. And, and the excuse from the vendor is, they're running late, they'll be there tomorrow. Well, that's one week, that's fine. Five instances of it this year, and I've also found out from other people and that I've walked around and talked to, it's happening in their neighborhoods too. So we're not the only people that it's happening to. So please. happening to. So, please, somebody, take responsibility and find out what's going on with our trash vendor, because they're not doing their job. Thank you.
Our deputy city manager, Mr. Ross, Stephen Ray back there, can talk to you about what's been going on. So, check with him on the way out, if you don't mind. Thank you. Now, item seven, a proclamation, present a proclamation designating the month of April as Fair Housing Month in the city of Friendswood. So, I have the proclamation. Aubrey, do you want to accept this? Katie, do you have your camera handy? I'll come out there. We do this every year. This is no surprise. We do follow fair housing guidelines in this city, as all, most good cities do. Not going to bore you with the words, but... Thank you, thank you. Good. Okay, item number eight, committees and special reports. Kicking this off is the Keep Friendswood Beautiful Annual Report. Patty Stanky, I see you coming up.
Did you notice my red?
Yes, yes. I love your red. Exactly. So, good evening, mayor and council. I guess I drive this. Great. I'm Patty Stanky. I serve as a chair of Keep Friendswood Beautiful. And members joining me tonight in red are Kate Corey and Paula Matranga and Meg Childers with the city staff. We're a volunteer board whose mission is to enhance the aesthetic appearance of our city and encourage residents to also take a role in maintaining that appearance. I'd like to review our activities and accomplishments for the last year, and these comments illustrate how our work centers around these focus areas. So, we're going to start with last April. We hosted our very first Pollinators in the Park event. This event's for elementary age Girl Scouts in our area. We had over 70 Girl Scouts leaders and parents that came and learned about pollinators and the educational aspects of our fairies and trolls here in Stevenson Park. We are having a second annual event, and it's scheduled for April 26th. We had a successful Spring Sparkle event with lots of participants last April. You can see all of our data from Spring Sparkle.
Not to be confused with the one that is this Saturday, 2025.
Yeah, that's from last year, from 2024, Spring Sparkle from last year. And you're right, just to restate, we have another event coming up on Saturday, 8 to 2 at Centennial Park. Still in April, we began tackling the removal of invasive woodie species in Stevenson Park with Texas Master Naturalists, cutting mostly ligustrum species from a small riparian forested area near Cowards Creek. More on finishing phase one later in the presentation, but we have moved on to phase two, and the master naturalists are cutting again. In May, we said goodbye to Friendswood High School's Mrs. Woodley, who had been the sponsor of the Friendswood High School Recycling Club since its inception. We work closely with the Friendswood High School Recycling Club, and we continue that great collaboration with these young people each year. In June, we commemorated the National Pollinator Month. We had the, in June, we usually have a big blooming of our sunflowers, so we're highlighting it there. We also had the installation of a new arbor in our pollinator garden. Close to a dozen volunteers work almost year round in the pollinator garden, planting, weeding, and watering. Also in June, we virtually attended the Keep Texas Beautiful Conference. And then also in June, we awarded photo contest winners. We had almost 100 entries last year. Our theme was landscapes. You can see our four winners up there on the screen. They received gift cards from local businesses. This year, our theme will be Friendswood Community Spirit, and our photo contest starts this Thursday, April 10th, and runs through May 19th.
Patty, I want you to know, that second one from the left, that's hanging in the mayor's office now. It's framed, and I love these photo contests, great photographers.
The, the second one from the left was the first place winner.
Well, in particular, I guess.
Yes, yes. In July, we won first place for our Fourth of July float entry themed music in America. And we also sponsored Movie in the Park, which was Moana. You see some of our residents there enjoying a cool evening in Stevenson Park.
Are you going to have a float this year?
You betcha. We'll start, yes, yes.
You've got some ringers working on your floats, don't you?
We have some ringers, yes. We're good at it. In August, we awarded the KFB matching grant to Falcon Ridge to HOA, and these funds were used to reimagine the entrance to their neighborhood. And that's the picture you see on the top left. We also attended the Chara Back to School Open House, and Figgy was there to greet 60 families. This event really helps us engage with our community. In September, the Friendswood High School Student Council volunteers came to Stevenson Park and cleaned litter from the banks of Cowards Creek. And Mary Queen Creation Care beautified Parkwood Avenue from HEB all the way to Windsong Elementary. You can see how many bags of trash they picked up on their Adopt a Highway spot. In October, Bird Chirps Estates opened in Stevenson Park. And you can see one of the estates on the left hand photo. There are six altogether. Those were prepared by Girl Scouts and city staff installed them. The Girl Scouts also developed a QR code that citizens can use to learn more about birds. In October, KFB also participated in the annual Scarecrow Contest. That's Polly, the Pollinator Gardener that you see in the center. She's made from recycled and reused materials. We also had a visit in Stevenson Park from Casper, the albino squirrel, who appeared just in time for Halloween in Stevenson Park. So, in November, we had Fall Holiday, and you can see our statistics for Fall Holiday up on the screen. Another very successful event. And then in November, we completed our invasive species removal phase one in Stevenson Park with the help from Boy Scouts, cleaning up and preparing the site. Texas Master Naturalists then supervised the Young Men's Service League volunteers that are in the photos that you see up above. The volunteers planted 50 native trees and shrubs that we received from Trees for Houston at no cost. The Texas Master Naturalists continue to monitor this site and make sure watering is occurring for these new natives, and to date, we haven't lost any of the 50 trees and shrubs that we put in. Our hope is to restrict the recurrence of invasives in our parks and increase the biodiversity of animals. December brought a refreshed holiday fairy trail, and thousands of people visited Stevenson Park for the Lighted Christmas Trail and Santa in the Park. Our holiday program continues to be very popular. So, so far in 2025, we've been very busy. In January, we gave away 100 trees at our Friendswood Arbor Day. Now, that's always the third Saturday in January, 8:00 a.m., first come, first served. In February, we received the Gold Star status from Keep Texas Beautiful for the 12th year in a row. We also submitted a GCAA grant application for constructive review because we're not eligible for that grant, but next year we will be.
Congratulations. That's, that's awesome.
Yeah.
What'd you say, 12th year Gold Star affiliate?
12th year in a row. And then we, for our first time, participated in Touch a Truck, where over 3,500 people attended, and we had an interactive booth there with a fun recycling game. Now, in the fall, FISD Transition Center volunteers put about three pounds of flower seeds in what we call Mustang Field, which is near the Dog Park. In March, then we start to see the results of their plantings. Also note the new bench and the walkway that was installed last summer. In March, we also hosted a very successful rain barrel workshop with one of our new partners, Galveston Bay Foundation. We had 45 participants and, excuse me, 71 rain barrels were distributed. So, in March, we saw the installation of the first, of the artwork on the traffic signal boxes. I was hoping there was a little film here, but I guess not. Have you guys seen this one?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's beautiful. It's right here, Friendswood Drive at Whispering Pines. We're really grateful to be working with FDEDC on this beautification project, and the artwork will continue to be installed starting at 2351 on 518 and ending at Whispering Pines. We also gave out four business beautification awards in the last 12 months, one to Friends Church, San Joaquin Parkway HOA, High Point Church, and most recently, the Alton Todd Law Firm. So, our many thanks to mayor and council for your continued support. We especially appreciate the hard work, creativity, and professionalism of the Parks and Rec staff. James, Megan, Catherine, Michael, Garrett, Caleb, Gary, Cece, and all the operations staff are wonderful to work with. We also appreciate all of our sponsors and all of our community partners that helped to keep Friendswood Beautiful. Thank you.
Thanks, Patty. Appreciate your continued volunteering. AB received the Fourth of July Steering Committee Annual Report. The Fourth of July Steering Committee's annual report was attached to the agenda for council's review. There's no in-person report, so I will accept that report. Thank you to the Fourth of July Steering Committee for all their hard work. HC received and discussed the Community Development Department's Quarterly Update, presented by Community Development Director, Aubrey Harbin.
Good evening, mayor and council. Just a quick update for CDD. Some staff activities that we've been taking part in. Diana and I attended a FEMA floodplain management class that was hosted in League City in January. Received lots of good information. We're assisting with the CRS program management, so it's good information for us to have. Ruben and Alex attended the Code Enforcement Association of Texas Annual Conference in Dallas, I believe. But they had, they actually participated and took a basket of goodies that was auctioned off, and a code enforcement officer from another city ended up winning that, so that was good. Diana was a panelist in a discussion at Texas A&amp;M, Texas Association of Governmental Information Technology Managers Annual Conference. It was, I think, Moe's reported on it before, but just letting you know again. And then I was also a presenter at an event that was hosted in League City. It was a group of mortgage brokers, just on new development in Friendswood.
Great.
I'm going to steal Moe's thunder a little bit. We were awarded a Resilient Communities Program Grant from the General Land Office. So, we will be receiving $250,000 to update our comprehensive plan in accordance with the hazard mitigation plans that we participate in with Galveston and Harris Counties. So, that will be a two-year project coming forward. So, we look forward to getting that going soon. That study will include a population study, a housing study, a land use study plan, make sure our zoning ordinances align with what we end up putting in the plan, and then infrastructure study and capital improvement plan. So, it'll be a lot. In process, we are in the process of updating our permit fees. That's been a bit of a challenge. We also continue to hopefully improve our workflows with our software. We've been on it for about a year and a half now, so, and then the digital plan reviews, still, we receive some refresher training from the software vendor and just trying to continue to improve those processes. GIS assisted engineering department and the third-party contractor with mapping pavement conditions and qualities, updating that study. They also created an internal dashboard for the police department to map calls and call data, and also created a new dashboard for planning. All the consultants that do our master, you know, update our master plans for parks, drainage, you know, utilities, they, the baseline is, you know, what does your zoning look like? What is your future land use map? So, Diane actually created a dashboard, and we can actually track our undeveloped acreage, so we can, because it's getting down to the nitty-gritty, so we can keep track of that as well.
It's just getting good.
New development, the story map, of course, is on the website, city's website. Anybody can access that at any time. But a couple of new projects to note, APA Designs is underway on Laurel. They demolished the old building that was there and are building a new building. It'll be the floral shop and a cute little wine bar. And then the Rancho Mexican Food Restaurant on West Parkwood. We approved a new facade for that. It's going to be Parkwood American Grill, so that is coming soon as well. The Planning and Zoning Commission, just for this first quarter, we've only had three meetings this year. We've approved one site plan and one site plan amendment, 10 plats, one zone change recommendation, and we have been working on two zoning ordinance amendments that'll be coming to you next month. And Planning Subcommittee, kind of in a holding pattern with this grant. Hopefully, we can switch gears and get going with that. And then, like I said, the ordinance Subcommittee, we've been working on the two ordinances that are coming to you soon, as well as a couple of other little things. General items for the commission, just can monitor development along 528, review and recommend updates to the Design Criteria Manual regarding the downtown district amenities. Now that the lighting project is going in by FDEDC and the sidewalks have all been installed, we just thought it might be good to revisit those requirements. And just review planning topics, and then monitor Texas legislative session changes.
Great. Thank you, Aubrey. AD received and discussed the 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Lupe, Lupe Garcia, Whitley Penn.
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council.
Good to see you with a smile on your face.
I'm here tonight to report to you the results of the city's financial statement audit for the fiscal year ending September 30 of 2024. The slides that I'm going to present to you will take you through an overview of the audit process, go through some financial statement highlights, and then I'll end with some financial required communications. So, field work actually began last summer. We were here on site, working through interim fieldwork procedures, focusing on internal controls, compliance, and doing everything we could in preparation for year-end fieldwork, which occurred in January of this year. During fieldwork, we obtained and performed audit procedures, obtained audit evidence to support our opinion on the financial statements. And included in the annual comprehensive financial report, at the very beginning of the financial section, is our opinion, and the opinion is in the very first paragraph, and the city earned an unmodified opinion for fiscal year 2024. That's the best outcome in a financial statement audit. That indicates that the city's financial statements are following all generally accepted accounting principles, what we call GAAP, and that the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects. And so, that, again, is found at the beginning of the financial section of the financial statements. Within the city's financial report, there's two sets of financial statements. Your government-wide net position is prepared and presented on an accrual basis of accounting. So, this presents all the assets of the city, all the liabilities of the city, and the differences reported as your net position. Total assets and deferred outflows of resources on September 30 of 2024 totaled 322.4 million, and that's primarily comprised of your cash investments and your capital assets, which were 78.4 million and 226.3 million. Your total liabilities and your deferred inflows of resources were 163 million. That's primarily the unearned revenue and the, related to the ARPA award, the unexpended funds related to that federal program, bonds and unamortized premiums payable of 124 million, and then your net pension liabilities related to the city's participation in TMRS for retiree pension. That was 13.7 million. The net position was 159.4 million, and that, again, that's the difference between your assets and your liabilities, outflows and your inflows. Drilling down on your... Drilling down on your long-term liabilities, they did decrease from the prior year in total by eleven point seven million. Uh, you look at your revenue and general obligation bonds, the two largest components of your long-term liabilities. Both of those line items decreased from the prior year due to regularly scheduled principal payments that were made during the year. You have notes payable for the acquisition of machinery, equipment, and vehicles. That also decreased in the prior year due to principal payments made during the year. You have your pension and O P E B liability that's related to retiree benefits. Those were measured, uh, as of the end of the year by your actuaries, and both of those, uh, were comparable to prior year. The, that pension liability actually did decrease due to favorable market conditions, so the investments, uh, increased in value during this particular, uh, period of time. I'm not talking about today. Um, and then you have your compensated absences, which are balances accrued by your employees for, uh, time that they've earned. And then your subscription-based I T arrangements is software licenses. So you have a, a small liability there related to those contracts. Your fund financial statements, uh, reported forty-five point three million dollars in ending fund balance at the end of the year. That was a decrease from the prior year of eleven point five million. That decrease is primarily related to your bond construction fund, which completed several drainage projects during the year. So that was a planned decrease there. And then the general fund reported a decrease in fund balance of three point four million. And that was related to Hurricane Barrel expenditures that occurred during the year that the city anticipates being reimbursed for, uh, in fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. Your general fund budget to actual revenues were greater than final budgeted revenues by one point six million. Your final actual expenditures were less than budgeted expenditures by four point seven million. Overall, again, there was a decrease in fund balance of three point four million during the year for an ending fund balance of thirteen point three million.
May I ask you a question right there?
Yes.
Did we just defer those expenditures because they were on our balance sheet? We just didn't spend them or we did not have expenses that, that total four point seven million? Do we know that?
So the four point seven, that real, that means that you didn't have expenditures compared to your final budgeted expenditures. So you had a budget and you actually came under that budget. Now, the three point four million represents actual expenditures that occurred that were less than the revenues that you brought in.
And just to add to that, we have some projects, for instance, that span multiple fiscal years. So though, even though we had expenditures of less than four point seven million, uh, it's not that that line item wasn't completed. It's being done in this fiscal year.
So they, yeah, they weren't incurred in fiscal year twenty-four, but they've carried over into fiscal year twenty-five. Your fund balance, three, thirteen point three million breaks down into a few different categories. Your non-spendable fund balance represents inventory and prepaid items. Restricted fund balance, point six million, uh, represents items earmarked, um, by external authorities for, uh, certain expenditures. Assigned fund balance, management earmarks those, three point two million. And then unassigned fund balance is everything else, um, that's not non-spendable, restricted, or assigned, available for spending on any lawful purpose of nine point one. Now, nine point one does represent twenty-one percent of your general fund expenditures that did decrease this year due to Hurricane Barrel. So the city expects that to come back once the reimbursement is received and fund balance will more be in alignment with what it was in, in the prior fiscal years. The Water and Sewer Fund reported an ending net position of sixty, uh, three point two million. You had operating revenues of twenty point two million, less your operating expenses of eleven point nine million. Transfers out of two point seven million for a positive change in net position of five point three million dollars in your Water and Sewer Fund. As part of the audit, we do review the city's accounting policies. There weren't any new pronouncements that the city had to implement, so the city's following all current, uh, U S GAAP. Estimates are part of the financial statements. Those could always change in the future. Uh, the more significant estimates are required to, are related to your participation in T M R S. Those are, uh, the pension and the O P E B liabilities and related inflows and outflows. Uh, you receive the reports from the actuaries and those plans, and you take that information and record it properly in your financial statements. Every financial statement audit of any entity always includes significant risk. We have to perform procedures to address these risks. And as members of City Council, you should be aware that these are risks that always exist. Management override of internal control, so you have established policies and procedures, but there's always that risk that management could decide to do something else. And so we perform procedures to look for that something else. And then there's always the risk that revenue could be recorded in incorrect fiscal period. And so we perform the procedures over your, your sales tax, your property tax, your grant revenue to ensure revenue for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four was related to fiscal year twenty-twenty-four. I'm happy to report that there were no difficulties in working with the city through the audit and finishing the audit. We had the city's full cooperation, so I would like to thank, uh, city staff and management for their assistance throughout the entire audit process because we're here performing our procedures on top of them having to complete their day-to-day tasks. So we appreciate their patience and cooperation. We didn't identify any misstatements that we had to bring to the city's attention, nor were there any disagreements on any matters with management. The last form of audit evidence we obtained is a management representation letter. In that letter, the city, uh, represents to us that it's been an open book. Nothing's been withheld that would misstate these financial statements or need to be disclosed. As far as we're aware, the city's not consulting with any other auditors or accountants on any financial reporting or audit-related matters. And during the year, that last bullet point, we may provide information and guidance and answer questions. Uh, but at no time do we feel the way we answer impairs our independence to serve as the city's external auditors. So that completes my presentation. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to take those questions at this time.
Just have one question. It's not about our audit, but someone asked me this question. I didn't know the answer. Are all taxing entities, are they required to have these independent audits?
If you receive public tax dollars, technically, yes, state law requires that you have a independent financial statement audit.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thanks, Lupe. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Item nine, receive and discuss an update regarding the capital improvement projects. Chief of Engineering, Bill Arias.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to give you a real quick, uh, overview on our, uh, capital improvement projects. And I'll add a couple of, uh, updates worth noting. So first thing is the Black Hawk Phase Two-B project. Uh, so we know the, uh, original contractor defaulted. So we brought in a stop-gap contractor, uh, to help keep things moving on that project. He's, uh, pretty well wrapping things up. Uh, these were things that, uh, were, uh, going to immediately, uh, help, uh, the residents i- in that area to be able to get into their, uh, driveways, uh, to, uh, uh, complete, uh, some of the, uh, the paving, uh, on that project.
Hey, Hill, one quick question. So all the driveways that had been left poor because of the default in the first contractor, they're all usable now?
They're all in yet, so they can all pull in now.
Thank you very much.
Uh, so, uh, one other thing about this, uh, project is, uh, we've been, uh, coordinating with the, uh, original contractors, uh, bonding company. Uh, and, uh, we've got, uh, the, uh, first phase, uh, done, uh, or getting close to getting it done, uh, the stop-gap, uh, work. Uh, what's ha, coming next is, uh, uh, we've been working with that, uh, contractor, uh, and the, uh, bonding company to, uh, get an agreement, uh, together to, uh, complete the, uh, the rest of that, uh, phase, what, uh, we're calling the, uh, uh, the west side, uh, that road. So we've given, uh, those numbers, uh, a proposal to the, uh, bonding company. Uh, right now, they're, uh, uh, vetting it. Uh, they told us they should have an answer to us, uh, here within the next, uh, uh, two to three weeks. Uh, once they get, uh, comfortable with, with those numbers, hopefully that happens. Uh, if, uh, they think that it's, uh, too far, uh, out of hand, then they would have to, uh, uh, go through their process, which is a little bit more drawn out, uh, which is going to be, uh, they, uh, create a contract of their own. They go hire a contractor. So this would be a little bit more of a, uh, a speedy process. Uh, this is not something that, uh, they normally go through. Uh, we've, uh, helped them out a lot in, uh, arranging a contractor to come in, and we've knocked up, uh, a couple of weeks, uh, maybe months off the process, uh, what normally, uh, would be a, uh, a real, uh, uh, pain to, uh, to go through. So, uh, we're working with them, uh, right now to, uh, try to get that going. And, uh, the last phase is going to be, uh, the, uh, the rest of the road. Just by the, uh, the nature of these things, uh, the, uh, uh, cost of, uh, construction of the rest of the road, it, it's gonna go up, uh, and where the, uh, bonding company will step in is, uh, they will, uh, uh, look into covering the, uh, uh, the delta in, uh, what that, uh, bid ultimately, uh, comes down to. So, uh, in game here being, uh, the city is made whole, uh, as much as possible, uh, outside of the, uh, the time and the, uh, the frustration of the, uh, the residents having to, uh, go through this. But, uh, they've been great to work with so far and, uh, hope that that continues.
One last question on that slide.
Yes.
When are you expecting, if everything went as planned, that you'd be finished with the Black Hawk, both Two-B and Two-C?
Uh, if everything goes according to plans, uh, we would start seeing, uh, construction on Two-C, uh, later on this year. Uh, we're gonna be starting on the south end, uh, from Thursa, uh, down to FM five twenty-eight. Uh, that'll take a couple of months, uh, and then they'll, uh, move to the north side and pick up the, uh, the rest of, uh, uh, Black Hawk, uh, Two-B. Uh, it'll give everybody a break, uh, i- if you're driving through there, uh, if you live there.
Early twenty-twenty-six kind of thing, or?
Yeah, uh, at, at the earliest, uh, a, a year from now, uh, more realistically, a year and a half from now.
Later in twenty-six. Okay, thank you. That's, that's close enough for what I was looking for.
Yeah. Uh, so next is the, uh, twenty-four-inch Clear Creek Waterline Crossing Project. Uh, the, uh, notice to proceed date is today, so the, uh, uh, project's clock is ti- ticking now. Uh, this includes both open cut and trenchless methods to install a twenty-four-inch transmission main. You see the route out there? We're looking for completion in December of this year. And this is a pretty critical project. We're, uh, excited to get this underway. The, uh, tank project at Surface Water Plant Number One is next. Uh, notice to proceed was given, uh, back on March twenty-fourth, and, uh, we're scheduled to wrap this up by October of, uh, twenty-twenty-six. This is gonna take a little while. But this project will, uh, boost our water storage capacity and it'll support future growth in Friendswood. Next is the, uh, H J A C Unified Planning Work Program. Uh, under the, uh, H J A C Planning Program, we've got two studies that are in motion, uh, with no local match required. Uh, the first one is, uh, well, I've got it called the, uh, the Master Trail Plan, uh, but they've informed us that, uh, they've made a, uh, uh, name change on that. They're gonna call it a mobility study now. Uh, it's gonna be a little bit more, uh, encompassing and, uh, than just, uh, uh, bicycle trails or walking trails. It's, uh, gonna look at, uh, holistic view of, uh, mobility within Friendswood. Uh, that's gonna be kicking off soon and, uh, it's gonna focus on accessibility and connectivity for cyclists and pedestrians. Uh, the next one is, uh, Friendswood Parkway, uh, the corridor study. And they held their first public meeting last week. Um, that'll help the, uh, guide the development and, uh, the strategy along the, uh, the corridor. Not mentioned up there also is, uh, uh, Brazaria County. Uh, they'll be, uh, sponsoring the, uh, Perilin, uh, Parkway, uh, portion of, uh, the entire corridor. Uh, staff met with, uh, H J A C, uh, last week and with, uh, Brazaria County. Really, the, uh, um, uh, point of that was to, uh, help coordinate the, uh, the, uh, outcomes of what the, uh, uh, Friendswood Parkway Corridor, uh, Study and, uh, their corridor is going to do. Uh, basically, we're, uh, we're gonna be meeting at, uh, FM, uh, twenty-three fifty-one. So they'll, they're going to, uh, be getting that, uh, engineering going here pretty soon. They're, uh, kinda in the same boat as we are. Um, and I'll, uh, explain that right now. Uh, let me, uh, get to, uh, on this one right here. Uh, so Tech Stop, uh, has started design work on our, uh, H J A C carryover, uh, spending projects for, uh, twenty-twenty-four. So that includes, uh, intersection upgrades at, on, uh, FM five twenty-eight, uh, including, uh, Bay Area Boulevard, Windy Way, FM five eighteen, and Sunset. These are improvements that'll, uh, enhance traffic flow and safety along FM five twenty-eight. Uh, the lighting on this, uh, project, it's gonna be let by Tech Stop, uh, is expected to happen around tw- December twenty-twenty-six. So, uh, right now, we are, uh, waiting for an advanced funding agreement from Tech Stop, which is what, uh, where Brazaria County is in right now. This, uh, next carryover spending project that we have is the, uh, Friendswood Parkway, what we call the E-phase. Uh, E-phase including environmental and, including engineering. Uh, the, uh, uh, project here will look at, uh, any environmental concerns that, uh, might exist, uh, along the future of Friendswood Parkway, uh, make sure everything is kosher. Uh, and, uh, it does follow a pretty rigorous, uh, process. Uh, this is all, um, uh, state funds that, uh, are being spent on these, uh, two, on these, uh, carryover projects. And, uh, they're pretty rigorous in, uh, uh, from steps A to B to C, uh, to get that done. So, uh, as soon as we get the, uh, advanced funding agreement from Tech Stop, uh, we'll see some action on that.
I just have a question. I noticed here that, um, the twenty percent local match, we can actually use our street maintenance dollars for that match. Is that correct?
Um, quite possibly for sections of roadway that may exist. Uh, the street maintenance dollars typically don't go to, uh, new roadways. Uh, so that's likely a typo.
Oh, sorry. Okay. I was excited there for that.
Good catch.
Okay.
Uh, lastly, um, just wanted to mention that, uh, uh, we're keeping a real close eye on tariffs, uh, what's happening on the, uh, national scene. They are going to contribute to elevate costs that we're gonna be seeing, uh, coming down the road. Uh, we're gonna be keeping an eye on that, uh, and, uh, see what happens with, uh, material costs 'cause we have, uh, quite a few projects, uh, out on the horizon. Depending on what happens, uh, uh, with, uh, materials, we may need to start considering, uh, what we may need to be doing, uh, to plan on contingencies, uh, in case, uh, there's some volatility in, uh, uh, material prices. So, uh, something definitely to keep an eye on. And, uh, that will wrap up my C I P update. I'm more than happy to answer any questions you might have. Okay.
Thanks, Hill.
Last thing I had is, uh, wrecking poogs.
Thank you.
No poogs. All right.
I had Texas Tech and U of H playing in the championship in my bracket.
All right, uh, item ten, ten A. It's now six forty-eight P M. And I call to order this public hearing concerning the advisability of the creation of a public improvement district, or PID, to make certain improvements in the area described as approximately one hundred and seventeen point five zero six acres, located southeast of Stonewall Pass Lane, southwest of Baker Road, northeast of Janet Lane, and northwest of Wilderness Trails, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of allowing all persons interested in, in the establishment of a public improvement district to be located within the city to be heard. Everyone desiring to be a part of this hearing should have completed the public hearing comment card in the foyer and submitted it to the city secretary. At the podium, each participant shall give his/her name and the address in order to have a proper record of this hearing. Rules allow each person five minutes to present information. However, I encourage everyone to be as brief and to the point as possible. I'd now like to request staff, request that staff summarize the subject of this public hearing.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. As you may know, we've been discussing the creation of a public improvement district for a number of months. Uh, last year, we created a tax increment reinvestment zone, uh, for Ters Number Two that included approximately three hundred and twenty-six acres. The subject tracked this evening is a hundred and seventeen acres on the northern end of this particular corridor. Uh, that includes the construction of Friendswood Parkway and the development of roughly a hundred and seventeen acres for forty-four large estate lots. Um, at the last city council meeting, y'all approved the development agreement associated with the Falling Leaf Ranch Project. To highlight a few of those items in that development agreement, um, for the benefit of overall discussion, and we can discuss this further, obviously, during the- overall discussion, and we can discuss this further obviously during the next item, is there are certain conditions that are required to be met in order for the public improvement district to issue bonds for the advancement of infrastructure. One of the key components to that is submitting a revised concept plan to the city that sufficiently indicates that they've complied with Exxon's requirements for the deed for that property as well as a revised deed being submitted by Exxon to the current landowner, JMK5. On the next slide, we highlight two more conditions associated with this. Basically, they're supposed to hire the engineering professional to verify the environmental issues that are present out on the site and submit a plan on how they intend to comply with those requirements as not only the deed, but also the settlement agreement that the city has in place with Mr. Chris Johnson. And finally, Section 7.04 of the Development Agreement outlines the updated warranty deed that the developer must obtain from Exxon in order to move forward with the project as well as providing the necessary warrants and covenants associated with the development of the tract. So I know there's going to be a lot of questions that y'all may receive this evening associated with the environmental concerns that are out there. Without a public improvement district, we cannot require, state law prohibits us from requiring this environmental oversight that is being provided associated herein. Also, I want to point out that if this project doesn't move forward, any environmental issues that exist out there exist and have existed adjacent to the neighboring developed properties. So having a backyard fence that backs up to this doesn't protect anybody from any environmental concerns that exist out there. In fact, this is our best approach to remediate any of those concerns.
Could you expand on that just a little more, Mo, because the developer, if he were not in a public improvement district, would not have any oversight except for the permitting process by the city. And then where we're going to be issuing bonds, we have oversight.
Correct.
Okay, so we have oversight over all of the remediation, all of the environmental requirements whereby if we weren't in a public improvement district, we wouldn't have those controls. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Great. Okay, if the developers' representatives, Chris Songster with Laughlin Environmental and Eddie Grant and Johnny Hayes with the Jet Lending can come up to the podium, you have 15 minutes to make your presentation. Shorter would be better.
I'm Christopher Songster with Laughlin. Laughlin Environmental Services, we were engaged by JMK5 as a consulting firm along with SK Consulting. I'm Senior Environmental Consultant with Laughlin, have been for 20 years. Basically, with this property, as you've shown up here, part of the acquisition contract has a deed restriction placed by Exxon and we're dealing with a couple of their properties in the Houston area with Exxon, also acquisitions that are for residential development. Their MO is pretty much the same. They put these deed restrictions on there to make sure that the property, knowing of potential future liability, make sure that the property is put into a position for residential development that would be more stringent than TCUQ or federal regulations would require, which they have. So where we are at in this process, we are, we still have some assessments to do to be able to put together a remediation plan. More than anything, what we're dealing with on this property are chlorides, essentially salt, salt soils. And so, but for residential, if it were commercial, we wouldn't even be talking. But since it's residential, we have to take that to a level that would be viable for residential development. It's more of an aesthetic issue more than anything because it restricts growth of trees and what have you. So what we're looking at here is basically removing those salt soils and other contaminants to a level based on Exxon's requirements, which are far more stringent than what the state or federal government would require. We still have some assessments to do to be able to complete that plan. That plan will be submitted to Exxon and then they will either approve or not. Until they approve that plan, then we implement that plan for remediation. Once that remediation is completed, then we will be doing more assessments and testing to confirm that that's been done to their satisfaction and only then will that deed restriction be lifted. So that's kind of where we're at right now. Thank you for your time.
And you say you're doing this work at other Exxon properties around this area?
Not in the Houston area, much larger, actually 1,200 and 1,500 acre tracts.
Those are further along in their development?
We're pretty much in the same, although we're dealing with hydrocarbons and a lot of contaminants on those properties. We're not dealing with chlorides, so it's just, this is a little different animal, much smaller property than those properties. But nonetheless, they need to be dealt with to Exxon's approval and they don't negotiate those. They pretty much say, no, we will, it'll be done to this level or we won't release that deed. So that's kind of where we're at.
Well, thanks, Mr. Songster. Any questions?
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And let's see, Mr. Grant? This is Grant on my sheet.
Good evening and go Cougars. I'm Eddie Gant with Jet Lending. My partner Johnny Hayes is in the audience. We were asked to come speak briefly about our involvement here. We've been in Houston 22 years. We have funded over 5,000 commercial projects. We've funded right at a billion dollars in real estate transactions. We're on JMK5 currently four properties and we have funded a total of 11. The other seven have come to a successful conclusion with us. The most notable one you guys might know about was the repositioning of the mall, the mainland. We funded most of that deal for JMK5. We've funded 117 acres here. All of Mr. Karam and JMK5's projects with Jet Lending are in good standing, current. We're here to fund it. We're standing by our client. We're ready to go. Funds are in place, have been for a while, and so we feel pretty good about Jet Lending's involvement with this project. Any questions or anything?
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you very much and we're local guys, so we're pulling for the Cougars too.
Glad to hear. Okay, I got two speaker cards here. First one, Randy Hale.
I'm Randy Hale, live at 902 Applewood Drive here in Friendswood. Talked to you guys last meeting and had a list of questions that we'd never quite made it through. And as all of you know, I really questioned the use of a TERS. TERS one, I get it. TERS two, it's a bond election workaround, in my humble opinion. Others kind of feel the same way. I've got one, my printer gave out, I've only got one copy of the four questions that Mr. Graffon kindly tried to get through, but we got kind of sidetracked and derailed and never got through them. May I ask that they be resubmitted for asking for in this period again? They have more to do with the TERS and this PID. Again, I'll repeat myself. I asked for a town hall to explain TERS, PID, all that concept early on. It didn't happen, so here we are about to start our second PID. And one of the items that came up during Mr. Graffon's talk before he asked my questions was how well P3 works and Bracewell had us protected against a developer that may get PID bond draws, which we haven't done the PID bond yet, but I think that's one of the next step, and their vendors are not paid. I've got copies of two of the liens that are currently on TERS number one. I'm sorry. They are from equipment rental companies that total over 900,000, and that's just two. There's a couple of more that put them close to a million dollars. In unpaid liens for equipment that was rented on our TERS number one site, even since the $16 million PID bond draw has been paid, as of 4:30 this afternoon, when I spoke to one of these vendors, they had yet to be paid. So I'm not sure how we're actually getting protected. I'd like to hear a little more about that. Beyond that, I would just ask that, you know, again, I'm not for the Parkway. I get it. I know it's probably going to happen. I am against the PID being used to finance it and the TERS paying for it. So having said that, there you go. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. Michael Ross.
Michael Ross, 310 Woodstream Circle, Friendswood, Texas. Good to see you all again. Randy got to one of the points, and I think it's a really important point for when we're discussing these types of PID funding structures, is what is the real oversight on this? If we had done an MMD in this case, which was a management district, which you're familiar with in West Ranch, you would have financial oversight through the district. The PID puts this district financing on the city to oversee it and you're funding these bonds in advance. So one of the questions, a series of questions I would ask if I was a council member, go Why did the city agree to a public improvement district versus a municipal management district or other financing structures? And I think it was pretty well articulated, you felt like you were getting some control over the environmental on this property. However, last week, we had just gone through the process of listening to Bracewell's attorney say that we didn't want to get involved with the developers and their lenders. I think likewise, we don't want to get involved with developers and their environmental consultants because you're not really getting coverage other than your sovereign immunity on this environmental. So if there is an issue, and I know it's mostly salts, but there are some leads and the benzene's a bit of a concern on a couple sites and they're kind of circumvented off. And again, let me reiterate, my expertise is I've done projects like this, so I've looked at every Exxon tract in town. I've looked at all their deed restrictions. I've passed on every one of them because what Exxon tries to do is put the onus on the developer or the city in this case, through the Pids and the TERS, to do their remediation for them. So why we're letting Exxon put this off on the developer or the city, I'm not sure. Also, was it so the city, you know, what was the purpose of the PID? And I've seen this in PID one or City Center PID, and it's concerning is you have a developer who's also circumventing the public bid process and named himself the contractor. So in City Center one, we have that. Is this going to happen in City Center, in this PID? Is the developer going to conveniently become the contractor and get to set his own pricing? Now, you may think that that doesn't impact the city because the PID's going to reimburse or pay this back, but those are eventually going to be citizens of the city. So it's going to be potentially an overburdened cost if they aren't paying market rate. And I want you to go look at City Center. I want you to go look and see if they're paying market rate for the type of works being done. I want you honestly to go look at it. I want you to go look at Harris County Flood Controls Project and see what they're paying for their dirt removal offsite and go look at City Center PID. So go look at those things and kind of evaluate for yourself how this is really being worked and then come back and look at the potential for this to happen here. What safeguards will be in place to keep the developer from front-loading the development costs by naming themselves this contractor? So, you know, potentially you could, if I was an unscrupulous developer and I wanted to be the contractor, I would pile as many dollars as I could on the front end of this deal, pocket those as profit, and then if this deal wasn't successful, I could walk away from the deal and just call my development in a bankrupt. Very possible and plausible with this structure. I'm running out of time and I got a lot of questions. What if the cost is too high? At the end of the day, if the developer's charging too much or everything else related to this development is too much on the front end and the project's not successful, because he still has to be able to market the property, he still has to be able to sell the homes. What happens if that's not a marketable property? You know, those PID bonds have to be assessed, there has to be an assessment attached to them, and if it doesn't work, how in the world are they going to be reimbursed? So the bondholders are at risk, not the city, I get that. But at the same level, the TERS is involved in this too, reimbursing the developer for some of these expenses, okay? So we have to be mindful that the project has to be successful. One of the things I looked at is I looked at the project plan, not necessarily for this part, but I looked at the project plan and the TERS and it had a significant amount of property, 485,000 square feet of commercial allocated in TERS two. That is more commercial space than you have in your entire city, first of all, or close to it. Second of all, it attributed a $615 or $618 per square foot valuation to it. I would challenge you to show me one property in the city of Friendswood that's currently being assessed over $615 per square foot. Show me one. I already know the answer, I can name you two. Chick-fil-A and the Valvoline. That's it. Thank you.
That's all the cards I have. There being no one else desiring to speak on this item, I now close this public hearing and we move on to item 10B. Consider a resolution authorizing the creation of the Falling Leaf Ranch Public Improvement District, which includes approximately 117.506 acres of land situated in the Robert Hoppel Survey Abstract Number 83 and the BBB and CRR Survey Abstract Number 47, which property is generally located southeast of Stonewall Pass Lane, southwest of Baker Road, northeast of Janet Lane, and northwest of Wilderness Trails, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas. Before I get a motion for this, Marad, give us an overview.
Nothing really to add beyond what was stated before, just as a matter of clarity, no PID bonds will be issued until a preliminary and a final servicing assessment plan has been created, reviewed, and approved by this body and staff, which means the marketability of those future homes would have already been determined before the PID bonds were issued. And as I stated before, the PID bonds will not be issued until those environmental issues have been addressed. So the fail safes are in place. We will know if there are potential homeowners out, potential viable homeowners out there because they will know what the PID assessments will be long before the PID bonds are issued.
Competitive bidding?
So state law does not stipulate competitive bidding requirements for TERSs and Pids. As you know, there's a risk associated with the project for the contractor when they accept a project, especially in this particular environment. You're subject to tariffs and stuff that will make the variability of various commodities move and fluctuate throughout the bidding construction process. Each project is unique on its own. So for instance, there was reference Harris County Flood Control District. Well, they're getting a certain rate based upon their particular project dynamics and where they're able to take their dirt to and the amount of work that they're getting completed versus a smaller site or a larger site. It's all based upon economies of scale and what the expectation is. So no, short answer is there's no competing bidding requirement required for public improvement districts and for TERSs, but if council would like to stipulate such, we can definitely do that. But you're also subject to those bids that you receive. So as we saw on Black Hawk Boulevard, we had a contractor that came in as low bid and they were unable to fulfill their obligation, meaning we had to then pull their surety bond to get the project completed, making the lives of our residents along that corridor that much harder.
Marad, in the same topic, just a follow-up. So in a situation where a general contractor is self-performing work, how are cost control? How is the PID-TERS process covered in that instance?
So their engineer of record develops an engineer's estimate of probable causes that goes into the development of the PID assessment that y'all review and approve. Those engineered probable costs are reviewed by our city engineer throughout the process along with the infrastructure plans. We look at various projects throughout the region to see if they're in line with what's proposed. Once those PID assessment, that servicing assessment plan is final and the steps are taken to issue bonds, at that point, that is what it is. So if the project ends up coming in higher, there's no additional funds. In fact, the development agreements stipulate that the property owner has to bring the excess funds needed to complete the project to the table.
Thank you.
Mo, would you go over the internal controls when these things come in for payment for the city?
Yes, ma'am. So in addition to P3 reviewing the payment invoices, our city engineer reviews the invoices relative to the infrastructure that's actually being installed out on site. So we have a project manager on site daily, for instance, Friendswood City Center, but that's not what's being discussed here. But they review things to make sure that it conforms with the servicing assessment plan quantities that are stipulated in place and then we review to make sure that we have the appropriate releases and warranties. It was mentioned that there are some liens on the equipment rental. This is very similar to when you go to a gas station. to a gas station and you put in your credit card at the pump, you get an automatic charge immediately to your credit card of some nominal amount of money until such time that the transaction's finalized. A lot of times, rental equipment companies will place a lien on the property, knowing that it's going to span multiple months, if not a year, for the project to be completed, and to ensure that their liabilities are covered, they will file a lien immediately on the property. That being said, we did require and are requiring that the contractor have the liens released before the next PID bond is issued, or before the next draw request is issued.
You verify that the contractor was paid.
Correct.
You verify that that payment was made.
Correct.
So it could be a sub of a sub.
It could be a sub of a sub, but as we see, and even on our own projects, there are times that sometimes the material contractor's not paid by the subcontractor of a subcontractor. Obviously, that's why you have payment and surety bonds in place to ensure that we're adequately covered. In this particular case, we had an unconditional release waiver.
I know that's TERS one, and we're talking about TERS two tonight.
I have a few more questions.
Go ahead, please.
Okay. Now, I attended the HGAC meeting that was referenced earlier, and there were some questions in there that I believe I know the answers to, but I just want to get it on the record, and none of these are terribly hard. But the developer filed a petition with the city. We didn't necessarily go out and ask the developer to set up a public improvement district. They petitioned us, and it's at their request. Is that correct?
That is correct. I can't speak for, if there's a council member or somebody that's had communication with the developer prior to any of the petitions coming in, but nobody on staff requested that the developer go purchase this property and submit a request for a public improvement district.
And as, and as, I'm sorry. And as part of our approval tonight, or our consideration of voting, that, you know, the developer and the city have met all the requirements to establish a public improvement district?
Yes, sir, we have.
You've looked at it, and you can attest to that? Okay. If the public improvement district is approved tonight, what are the next steps? What are the next things that are going to come before city council that we will have to vote on to continue the process of this PID and TERS going forward for this particular development?
So the next steps that's come before this particular body is going to be the creation of a preliminary service and assessment plan. But prior to that, being able to be developed, the engineering and the environmental associated with the revision to the concept plan out there need to take place, as well as working with Exxon to get the revised deed. So before we can bring you this preliminary services assessment plan, we need to have identified all the potential costs out there associated with the development of the public infrastructure, and to know that the plan moving forward is even viable. So for instance, the developer's showing 44 lots right now. In accordance with Exxon's deed, that may or may not be a likely outcome. They need to run all that stuff, do the necessary remediation to ensure that they can get the total number of lots that they're projecting, because obviously the service and assessment plan will establish a PID assessment per lot. So if you only get 20 lots, obviously, then that assessment needs to be that much higher. And that determines whether or not this project is even market viable.
Okay. So throughout this process with the PID and TERS on this particular development, the developer is required to go out and do a Phase One investigation for looking for environmental issues, a Phase Two, the testing if they seem to see an issue, and then ultimately, if required, because they find something remediation in a Phase Three. When does that occur as part of the process compared to when we're going to approve things? Are we going to be, are we going to have that kind of information before we're asked to approve the next steps, like the assessment plan and so forth? I just don't, I'm confused as to where the information's going to show up.
So the way the PID assessment is developed, you have to have both sides of the equation. You have to know the total cost of the project, public infrastructure and environmental remediation associated with those, the public infrastructure, and you have to know the total lot yield, to know the total number of units that you can physically have out there. In order to determine that, you'd have to have all the clearances completed. So you'd have to have the Phase One, Phase Two, and possibly Phase Three environmental completed. You'd have to have a plan in place that would stipulate how you would comply with what the findings of those environmental reports are. And you also have to have Exxon's agreeance to a revised deed being filed on the property that you know you're going to get this many lots yielded by this project. That has to take place before we can complete the preliminary service and assessment plan for this body to approve.
Okay, my last question. Thanks for everybody bearing with me. So I heard something tonight from Mr. Songstar. I should have asked at the time, but I just think it, continued to think it through, but you referenced it there. I've assumed all along that the special warranty deed was just a document that was going to stay there when they purchased the property, and that the developer, per our agreements and his own agreements, has to live to that special warranty deed. But I heard something tonight about modifying that. I mean, again, you know, I don't necessarily need to call Mr. Songstar back up here again, but I'm just curious, if we've got those requirements in there, are those requirements going to change, to best of your knowledge? And two, how do we, how do we actually oversee that those requirements, the liner that was mentioned and that sort of thing, that, you know, how, who watches that? How do we figure out and keep track of what of those deed restrictions or warranty, special warranty deed restrictions are going to be actually implemented and implemented properly? Can you bear some light on that?
So obviously, the concern with the environmental is one of liability, both on the part of Exxon and also on the part of JMK5. Exxon filed a special warranty deed when they conveyed the property from Exxon to JMK5, and in that deed, they outlined all the concerns that they potentially may have, and they've identified them in terms of encumbrances. Because of the concerns that they have, before they released residential development, Exxon stipulated, and we agreed to and stipulated in the development agreement, that you submit a revised concept plan and get a new deed filed that would supersede that special warranty deed that was filed by Exxon. Obviously, the health of the future homeowners out there are paramount, but on top of that, they're also concerned about their pocketbook, meaning Exxon's. So they want to ensure that everything is appropriately addressed and mitigated. So that's the next step in the process, and that's what was stipulated in the development agreement that this body approved last month.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Hanks.
So what I'm understanding is, once all those environmental concerns are met to Exxon satisfaction, they release that special warranty deed?
Correct, and there'll be a new deed filed with the property that this body will see before you approve the service and assessment plan.
Okay, okay. That's what I thought, but I want to make sure I understood.
Well, they won't release it. They will amend that deed.
Amend it.
So how do we come up with the $16 million in this assessment, I mean, in this public improvement district as an estimated cost, when those costs right now are so variable?
So the costs are based upon public infrastructure. So for instance, the remediation associated of what we know, but they're not getting reimbursed remediation cost outside of what's within the right of way for the public improvements. So Friendswood Parkway, the internal streets, that sort of thing, the detention pond. Any other remediation that's required on the private lots in the future will have to be borne by the developer and passed on to the, in the price of the lot when they sell it.
Okay, I believe that was one of the questions, too. The obligations for the developer to the city is just the infrastructure that's public?
Correct.
It's not the other existing roads out there?
Correct.
Like Falling Leaf is, would be a private development road, or would that actually be a public infrastructure for the city?
So the extension of Falling Leaf into this project would be a public roadway?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Any other questions? Good discussion. Okay, can I get a motion on this item?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to second. All in favor. Okay, show it five to one. Passing. Item 11, City Manager's Report, presented by City Manager Murad Kabiri.
Yes, sir.
I will be brief. There are two things I want to highlight this evening. First, recognize Mariela Lopez in our municipal courts for completing her Level Two Court Clerk Certification through the Texas Clerks Association. Mary Bella's been with us for a number of years and is doing a fantastic job, and definitely want to recognize her on that recent attainment. You'll see on the screen the requirements for both Level Two. There's three different exams, and what all goes into it, it's not, it's not an easy cert to get. Lastly, Aubrey already stole my thunder, but we did get the grant from the GLO for $250,000 towards our comp plan, which is a huge accomplishment. So well done, Aubrey. We were able to move that project forward. And lastly, thank you, Councilmember Hanks, for supporting Friendswood, or not Friendswood, U of H tonight by wearing red. Sorry.
Get home and change.
Yeah.
Very quickly.
No, I'm teasing, but I can't wait to get home and see a national championship for U of H.
We're getting there. We're getting there. Okay, is everybody okay? We've got a couple more items here. Take a break after consent. Item 12, Business Items, 12A, Consider an Agreement with Exxon Enterprises, Inc. for the sole source purchase of TASER hardware, software, and related services for the police department.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor. All right, six to nothing. Item 13, Proposed Ordinances and Resolutions, 13A, Consider on second in final reading an ordinance disannexing one approximately 130 acres located along 528 at the easternmost city limits, being out of the Thomas Choate League, Abstract 12, the August Whitlock Survey, Abstract 793, the Robert Wilson Survey, Abstract 88, and the John Dickinson Survey, Abstract 15, Friendswood, Harris County, Texas, and two portions of FM 528 located adjacent thereto and extending eastward approximately .67 miles.
Motion to approve.
This is the second reading, yeah.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor. Let it be disannexed. 13B, Consider on first reading an ordinance amending the term of office for Position One of the City of Friendswood's Planning and Zoning Commission to more effectively stagger the terms of the entire commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor. 13C, Consider on first reading an ordinance amending the fee schedules contained in Appendix D, Schedule of Fees, Rates, Charges, Deposits, Bond, and Insurance Amounts of the Friendswood City Code to reflect that the enumerated fees are fees to be collected by the city, and to update fees for buildings and building regulations by adding Paragraph R to subsection one, Building Permit Fees Electrical, Paragraph I through, paragraphs I through K to subsection two, Building Permit Fees Plumbing and Gas, Paragraph I to subsection three, Building Permit Fees Mechanical, and Paragraph AC to subsection five, Building Permit Fees.
Motion to approve.
Motion to second. All in favor. Thanks, Aubrey. You're ready. 13D, Consider on first reading an ordinance amending Appendix A Signs, Section One, Definitions of the Friendswood City Code to add a definition of temporary outdoor use signs, and Section 15, Temporary Signs of the Friendswood City Code to add a new subsection to be numbered and entitled Subsection E1, Temporary Outdoor Use Signs, to allow such signs to advertise a permitted temporary outdoor use.
Motion to approve.
I have a question.
Second. End discussion.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion to second. End discussion.
Motion to second. Discussion.
I just want to confirm, Aubrey, that there's still the exclusion written into the temporary signs ordinance about charities, 501(c)(3)'s?
Nonprofits. Nonprofits? Yes, sir. Yes.
Okay. Just confirming that that's still there?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
So just ruled...
What is that? I can't remember what that is.
Nonprofits can put up a sign, little temporary signs.
Ahead of their events.
Like the fish fry.
Like the fish fry.
Like the fish fry, the ice cream social, those kinds of things. They're nonprofits.
No permit required.
Right, no permit. I'm so sorry.
I got you. Okay.
Yeah. So just a brief explanation. So the Planning and Zoning Commission's public hearing for changes to the commercial activities is this Thursday, and it's coming to you for May. But we wanted to get the exceptions and the sign ordinance going, so that they'll both be approved on the same night. So this is in conjunction with the changes to outdoor, what was previously outdoor sales and special event permits. So now it's temporary outdoor uses, so there's a 30-day option and a four-day option, but all the business owners want to be able to advertise for their special events. So typically, bandit signs are prohibited. So this adds an exception that if they get a, for permitted temporary outdoor uses, they can have either one banner or six, like 12 by 18, max two square feet signs on their property, up to seven days before the event takes place. They can also do, if they're having off-site parking, they can put parking signs on those properties the day, the days of the permitted event. So those, and no separate permit will be required. So like I said, it's in conjunction with the changes for the outdoors.
Commercial activities?
Yes.
And that's being heard?
It goes to Planning and Zoning Commission this Thursday, and then it'll be on your agenda for May 5th.
Any other questions, comments? I got a motion to second. All in favor.
I actually need a clarification. She made a motion to approve. You made a motion to discuss. So you said for discussion.
No, no, no. We made, she made a motion. I beat, I beat him saying discussion. I second the motion, and then you can discuss.
Okay, second to motion to approve.
So motion, second to approve, and then discussion.
Got it. All right, now I'm ready.
All in favor. Six to nothing. Okay, 13E, Consider an ordinance amending the city's general budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025 by approving Budget Amendment Seven and providing for supplemental appropriation and/or transfer of certain funds.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor. Six to... 13F, Consider a resolution expressing opposition to Senate Bill 2722 and House Bill 5177 regarding the allocation and use of toll road revenue generated by the Harris County Toll Road Authority.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to second. Murad, do you want to?
Yeah, you want to tell them?
Just briefly, there's been both a Senate bill and a House bill proposed to divert Harris County Toll Road Authority funds of roughly $53 million a year to the city of Houston, potentially for public safety. We don't know. There's not an audit requirement. The reason it's of concern to us is those are the same funds that Harris County Precinct Two has partnered with us on, on various projects, and one of them being Blackhawk.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Any questions? All in favor. Pose it. Okay, item 14, Consent Agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor. All right, passes. All right, let me, now, taking a short break, and turn my page. It's now 7:27. We will now recess and convene into an executive session pursuant to Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code to deliberate the annual performance of the city manager. I now reconvene the open meeting of the Friendswood City Council and announce that in accordance with Section 551.102 of the Texas Government Code, no action was taken in the executive session. We now move on to item 16A. 16A, Consider Taking Appropriate Action Regarding the City Manager's Annual Performance Evaluation. Okay, let me see if I can verbalize this. I need a motion to authorize me, the mayor, to negotiate and execute a new employment agreement with the city manager, Murad Kabiri, which shall include a 4% increase in base compensation. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, second, second.
All in favor. In favor. All right. Thank you all. Appreciate that. So...
Congratulations.